Call the order for the March 8, 2021 city council meeting of Dunellen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. At this time, if there's anyone that would like to start the meeting off with a prayer, please come up to the podium. We welcome anybody that would like to do that. Okay. Ms. Hilton, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, help her by pulling that microphone down. It's always tough for her.
I need to put stool. That's fine. Thank you. I pray that we, this council, will be blessed with the wisdom that's necessary to help this city continue to grow and to help the citizens of this city to develop good understanding of what is important for us all and that we will be guarded in safety through this pandemic. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Ms. Roberts, can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Henshaw.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Covage.
Present.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Troy Slattery, Public Works.
Here.
Dan Smith, Finance Department.
Here.
Lynn Wallen, Clerk's Department.
Here.
Julie Donowski, Clerk's Department.
Here.
Andrew Hand, City Attorney.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Thursday, March 4, 2021.
Very good. Just a clarification. At this time, do we go straight to council comments regarding the agenda or do we go to the wide-open public comments?
Council comments first, then public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay. Okay, council. Do you have any comments on the posted agenda as it is presented?
No, sir.
No, sir?
No, sir.
No comments. Okay. Public comments at this time on non-agenda items, what this simply means for those of you that are not familiar with what we do, is anything that's not listed, this is the time to speak to it. If it is listed, you wait till it is, till we come to it on the agenda. So anyone that would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda, do we have anybody signed up? None? Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Ms. Dunn?
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendrix Drive. I wanted to announce that we are going to have a community beautification forum this Thursday at City Hall from 4:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. The purpose of this forum is to help identify eyesores within our city. All the public is invited. I've advertised it on Facebook, in the newspaper, and I've gone door-to-door to distribute flyers. The action that I'm hoping will come to this forum is to offer solutions from the public and examine ways to address the eyesores within the city. The solutions will be projects that will beautify our area but can lift spirits, property values, and welcome visitors to our area with pride. I'm hoping that out of this, I can develop a core group of volunteers that can attack one core issue, one beautification project per quarter, and we can all come together and do that. And then also to, I'd like to show the pictures of the eyesores and present the feedback from the citizens at the next, either April or May's workshop to y'all. The other thing is possibly to recruit the county, the city, and the planning forum council to get together and address some of these issues. Thank you.
Is anybody in the line of flyers ready to be on board?
Very good. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment to any non-agenda item? Very good. We're going to now move, if you follow the agenda, to the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda to be approved as presented.
My second.
Okay. At this time, we have to accept comment, actually accept comment on consent agenda items prior to making a motion. Is there anyone in the audience that is looking at the consent agenda that would like to make comment to it? Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. The motion was made by, by Smear. The second was, Ms. Kenny, correct?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved unanimous. So those of you who are following, we just went through items 1 through 5 with the approval of the consent agenda. Now we are going to the regular agenda, which is item number 6. Special presentation to the Dunellen High School football team. I want to welcome Coach Price Harris and the principal of the high school, Wade Martin, to our city of Dunellen, right here. You are part of the city. Welcome to City Hall. And we're here for a very special occasion. If you have been following the Dunellen football team over the last few years, you are well aware that they are considered a statewide power in the group that they play. They have been in the playoffs consistently. They have gone to the Final Four, I believe, twice in the last couple of years. Went to the Final Four this year. They played their season during this COVID problematic, through this COVID period of time where everything was tested, on practices and whatever. And in spite of all this, the team went undefeated for the season and went within, I think, one or two points of winning the semifinal game before going to the championship. It was a very great season. And I have been going to the football games now for the last three years, and I would recommend when the Tigers play to check them out. It's an exciting brand of football. I hadn't seen a football game at the high school level since I left high school, so that's about 50 years ago. And the game has changed. When I watched it, I was a baseball player, didn't play football. But football back then at the high school level was three yards and a cloud of dust. Whoever could run up the middle and whoever could run a power sweep, that was pretty much the offense. You go and watch football now, especially the Tiger football, it's a wide-open pro football with passing, screenplays, draws. I love, Coach, your trick play on the extra point where everybody lines on one side of the ball and the defense has to adjust to that. I'm still trying to figure that one out, looking at it. So at this time, I guess, Mandy, we invite them up and we read the proclamation.
Do you have it? Do you want to read it? Are you going to me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead. Sure, please.
Proclamation 2021-03, Dunellen Varsity Football Tigers Appreciation Day. Whereas Dunellen High School was established in 1945 and is one of the oldest established secondary schools in Marion County, Florida, and currently has over 1,000 students in grades 9 through 12, and requires scholastic aptitude to participate in any athletic team or club. Whereas the mission of Dunellen High School football program is to help the students reach their academic and athletic goals and to produce men that go on to become good husbands, fathers, and upstanding members of society that will one day impact our community and the world. Whereas under the leadership of Principal Wade Martin, Athletic Director Bruce Wentz, and Coaches Price Harris, Tommy Sutton, Ernest McNeil, Joshua Burkhart, Justin Hamm, Stanley Jackson, Aaron Richardson, Gary Lineback, and Nelson Rodriguez, the varsity Dunellen Tigers won the district championship. Whereas the Tigers continued to go undefeated, winning the county championship, and on December 4, 2020, defeated the Vanguard Knights for the regional championship, which led them to play in the Final Four on December 11. With a score of 26 to 24, they finished just short of a shot at the state championship. Whereas these young student athletes' accomplishments were hard-earned and most deserved, they practiced rigorously during their season with dog determination to succeed while keeping their academics at priority. Their efforts are truly commendable. Whereas the city, I'm sorry, the Dunellen City Council would like to sincerely thank each of the players for their unwavering discipline, devotion, and determination, and the coaches for their faithful leadership in this community. You have our genuine reverence and most heartfelt congratulations. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Dunellen City Council recognizes March 8, 2021, as Dunellen Varsity Tigers Appreciation Day, and encourages the entire community to show their support and appreciation to these athletes.
Very good. Okay.
Go down.
All right.
I think you have three four come from the pros for Dunellen.
Yeah.
We're very proud of all our kids. We've got great kids. We've got a bunch of those from Dunellen. So we appreciate it. Thank you all so much for our, Coach, Principal.
So, Wade, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
Wow. So thank you all so much.
Excellent.
Good luck next year.
Thank you. Okay, we go to item number 7. It is a, we're very excited that Sheriff Billy Woods has decided to come and address council. Sheriff Woods, with the warmest welcome, thanks for coming to Dunellen.
Thank you, Mayor, and council, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come before y'all. One of my jobs as sheriff is to pretty much know everything that's going on in my county, not only through my three big cities, but also townships like Lynn, Fleming, Shiloh, Pedro. Those people I ain't never heard of. I know everyone of them. The opportunity, and what brings me here today is some of the discussions in which has come back to me regarding the council here and your police department, and the contracting. And I want to provide you some information, so hopefully that I can answer your questions that have been asked, give you what is and what is not, and hopefully give you a little more information as we go along. One of the things I want to point out is, the city of Dunellen is a very unique place. You don't know it, but you actually have two sheriffs that come here on a regular basis. They have family here. They compliment the city of Dunellen to me every time that we have conferences, that we come together, and they just enjoy it. Y'all do a fabulous job of taking care of them, so as a thank you for taking care of my fellow sheriffs, first of all. The city of Dunellen, I don't know if y'all have been able to get this information, in the last two months, you have, the city police department has worked just over 1,000 calls. That's about 500 calls a month. My district of Dunellen handles roughly 2,600 calls within that same time period. And I have 10 deputies that works that area along with investigations and lieutenant that oversees the particular district. Dunellen has a city of population of roughly about 1,900. Now Marion County is hovering around 385,000. Three to five years, we will be a major county. And the 400,000 mark is what determines what a county is a major county. Our growth is rapid, which is good for our economy, it's good for our community. And if you don't know it, we're 1,657 square miles, the fifth-largest county on the state floor. I have the responsibility of an enormous area that, it takes me last night from my house to the call on which I had to go to last night, was roughly a 40-minute drive. That's just to half of the county. I tell you these things to give you a broad picture of what we have to deal with here. I know it's been asked about taking and contracting with here, and there's been a comparison like to Citrus County. I warned you about comparing to other counties. One, Citrus County is nowhere near the size of Marion County. My starting pay is a whole lot more than Citrus County. My starting pay is roughly right at 45,000 a year. Now you are provided services of roughly 10 officers, correct me when I'm wrong, Chief, please, 10 officers. You have two working corporals, they actually work calls. You have a part-time investigator for this city. And they do, I usually don't care if I'm in public for them, so they do a damn good job, just so you know. Some of the things that you need to be aware of, looking at type of a contract, when you're a small city, unlike my office, is you have certain advantages of grants that I do not have access to. One being the cars in which your police department purchases. It's through the USDA. I cannot get that grant because I'm too big. Small cities are able to obtain these grants if the USDA actually purchases your vehicles. My vehicles comes from the taxpayer, from the sales tax, transient populations, that type of things. One of the things a lot of people also don't know is, unlike Citrus County, I do not work crashes. My deputies do not work crashes in the county. That is the responsibility of the Florida Highway Patrol. Here, to their, not to their fault, Florida Highway Patrol is extremely short of troopers. Response times to crashes are usually one to two hours before they even arrive on the scene. A lot of times, we only have one trooper for this entire county covering the amount of reds in which they work. Losing and coming to my services, your citizens would not get that from me. They would have to wait on a trooper to respond. Now Citrus County does work crashes, and that's up to the sheriff themselves. Some of the things that you do get already, you may not know it, is I deputize every single one of your officers, which allows them the ability to go just outside the city, which on their investigation of a crime that occurs in the city, without having to stop at their jurisdiction, it allows them to go into the county and make an arrest if they have to, which benefits you, the citizens, because we all know criminal does not care nor know what a city line or a county line is, and they go where they please. But on top of that is, I benefit. They sometimes assist my deputies in the county, backing it up when I have one lonely deputy, let's say, in Rainbow Lakes by themselves. But in reverse, my deputies do it for you. I allow them to come into the city, to work, to back you up. In fact, this past two, excuse me, not two months, actually, this past year, my deputies did work right at 100 calls in the city, because either your officers were busy handling their own call, but we were having to take care of you as well, too, which I will take care of every citizen in my county, regardless of where they reside, always will. But it benefits both of us. Now we know that you've got the Great River, and one of the reasons that those two sheriffs come here is you've got the Rainbow River, and is it extremely active? And your population probably increases to 20,000 to 25,000 during the summer. And that's what your officers are having to service, which is actually the same amount as my deputies are servicing for the entire Dunellen District outside of the city limits. The population in the Dunellen District is 24,000. However, I patrol that river as well, along with your officers. You get my marine patrol. You also receive my air unit when the police department, the chief calls for it, whoever's working at night needs it, helicopter comes and assists. You receive my SWAT if you need them. You receive just about every specialty unit to service there is, at no cost. And I don't charge you or seek to charge you, and I have no desire to do it. I can't say one day when we continue to grow and get bigger and you get bigger, that won't change, because I'm servicing within a city when all that pay is actually for the unincorporated areas, and something that I always have to take into consideration. So I worked up some numbers for you. And I've been asked, providing, ensuring, providing the service, as I also heard from meetings that y'all have had, and yes, I do listen to your meetings, just so you know, regarding having services and deputies specifically assigned to this city, which is a possibility. If I tell you right now, I wouldn't do it. But however, doing that, you become equivalent of one of my districts. Now I don't like the number, but it would become 13, District 13. The size is about the same, actually is the same, to be honest with you. And if I take the same amount of deputies, put them in here along with two supervisors, along with a lieutenant, because now you become a district, with the salaries in which I pay my deputies, the capital costs which I incur, the benefits in which they receive, it's just over $2 million to receive the exact same amount of officers as which you Even if I cut it, a lesser plan where you would not be provided someone dedicated solely to the city limits, because that puts a strain on my enforcement in the unincorporated area, you're still looking at $1.2 million. But however, that would change rapidly. There's many demands, there's growth, I just told you the growth, not only in the county, but as your city goes, that would increase over time. But I have to take not only the safety of the citizens of Dunellen, the citizens of this county into consideration, I have to take the safety of my deputies as a priority. And that first option would be what the contract would be, just over $2 million. Some of the things, and I want to dispel a couple of things, I know that were highlighted and mentioned in regards to Citrus County, they provide two community service officers. Now I'm extremely familiar with community service officers, because when I worked, and I forgot to mention this in the beginning, for those that don't know, prior to becoming a sheriff, I worked for the city of Ocala. And I have an extreme understanding and appreciation for the cities that exist here in Marion County. And I understand the need and the necessity for having your own police departments. So for five years, I supervised the city of Ocala's community service officers, so I know exactly what they are. I do not have community service officers within my office. Now, community service officers are usually paid at a lower rate than a sworn officer. That's why Citrus County probably gets away with a little cost savings. Along with, they have a, two part-time public service officers. I do not have such program, does not exist within my office. Make sure I hit all of them here for you. Pretty much takes care of the contract, probably, you'll probably have other questions, but there's one other area in which I want to clarify. And it saddens my heart, because folks are, usually are not aware of how our government works. Now there are 67 of us sheriffs in this entire state, the office of the sheriff. The office of the sheriff in every county is one of five constitutional officers that is instilled into the Florida Constitution. Out of the five constitutional officers, the office of the sheriff is the highest. We actually hold the most power. The office of the sheriff does not answer to the Board of County Commissioners. They are not my boss. They do not tell me what to do. They do not tell me how to budget. They do not tell me where to direct my funding. Our founding fathers were brilliant men. Now the office of the sheriff is 200 years old, because it was established in 1821 when the first two counties were established and this state came about, St. John's and Escambia County. And we're separated from the Board of County Commissioners, because the Board of County Commissioners are the purse holders for our offices. And what I mean by that is their job to collect the money. I then ask for it, give them the budget, present it, and justify it, and they give me the money. And they cannot tell me how to use it after that fact, once they give it to me, or to any sheriff in this state. But I say our founding fathers were brilliant, because as we well know, money has the ability to make people evil. And being a sheriff, wielding that much authority, you combine the two, it's a recipe for evil. So our founding fathers separated the two for a reason. I've got to beg them for the money, and they can refuse me on that money. So I want to make sure that everybody, one, understands that, because when it comes to this contract, it's not the VOCC's decision, it's the office of the sheriff. There is no sheriff's department. There's one individual, and there's 67 of us. I answer to the citizens of Marion County and them alone, is all I answer to. And then finally, I want to commend the mayor and Chief McQuaid, because they came to see me, to talk to me. Little disheartening that I had to come here on my own, and I wasn't asked. Now my door is open to every citizen in this county. Now there are some nut jobs that I don't allow in my office, but however, for you, you are always welcome. And I will sit and chat, I will drive to Dunellen, and I will talk to you, every one of you. You can ask me any questions. Now if you don't know me by now, you ain't been watching the TV, because I don't hold back, and I sure enough will give you the God's honest truth. But however, I thank you, Mayor, and I thank you, Chief. I commend Chief McQuaid for the way that he has taken your police department over the years. Now for you who don't know, I have been in law enforcement here in Marion County for 31 years. I have seen changes in this city in my career in law enforcement. You've heard a little bit of the funding, a little of the things that is done. Your chief has done exceptional with what little he has to provide you with a service that you are receiving at this time, which is exceptional. Doesn't mean my deputies or my office will not do the same and cannot do the same, but however, I want to give you one little bit of advice. Now contrary to how he looks, he's not a spring chicken anymore, and his time is short. My advice is to you, I have 31 years, and he has more than I do. Rely on his wisdom, his knowledge, and his vast years of experience, because I'm here to tell you, as a sheriff of this county, I seek his advice on occasion. So that's what I have to say, and I'll open it up to any one of you who want to ask me a question.
Anyone on council have a question for the sheriff?
Anyone on council have a question for the sheriff?
No, I think.
Please, please let me recognize you first, okay, Ms. Kenny?
No, I was just going to say, this is a lot to absorb. And if there is any way that part of what you have given us in terms of an outline could be in paper, it would be greatly helpful to me.
Yes, ma'am. Sure enough, you will have it first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
And I'll get your email from Chief McQuaid.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. Jan Cubbage, and I'm the person who brought this idea to the floor, as I'm sure you already know. I want to thank you very, very much for coming here this evening, because I have learned much from you, particularly your relationship, the sheriff's department to county commission. I was given information by another party that is contrary to what you have told me. So, I appreciate that much. Also, I want you to know that as a schoolteacher, I've worked with your SRO officers, a handful of them at Dunellen High, and they are the finest.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
I've had them come into my classrooms to talk to my students about law enforcement careers and so on, and you got a good group of people there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Sheriff Woods.
Good evening, ma'am.
I just want to say I thank you for the information that you have provided. It's a learning experience for me, and I appreciate it, and I intend to go on the website and listen again to make sure that I understand what you're saying. But the information is very valuable to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Again, thank you for coming tonight. I guess it's always best to go to the horse's mouth, so to speak, since for Marion County, I think that's appropriate to say. But it is, you know, y'all do a great job here, and I just wanted to commend y'all on last night as well. I know it was a hard night last night, so thank you for protecting the Dunellen area residents, especially, you know, that y'all could. But again, if we ever have questions, I know your door is always open to us, so thank you very much.
Please do. I know Reddick does all the time.
Yes, I'm sure.
So, Sheriff, I think the question that was possibly on certain people's minds was the police protection that we currently get, and we realize we have a dynamite police force. I mean, I truly can say, I can sleep at night and not lock my door, and I really don't worry about it. And that's saying something. I think the question that is out there is to get the same police coverage that we currently have, which means we have two officers on duty 24 hours a day within the six-mile city limits, and the expense that goes with it. The question would be, to duplicate that same coverage through the sheriff's office, could it be done for the same price or less? The number that I think I kind of use is, basically to run our police department, is $1,002,000. And you're stating to duplicate exactly what we have would be pushing $2 million.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And that would be two sheriffs within the city limits 24 hours a day.
That is correct. Two deputies, along with, do I?
Deputy.
Deputy, no, I, it's two, it's two deputies. What he just said is what's in the plan, two deputies, at all times in the city limits, along with an investigator, two supervisors, and a lieutenant to oversee them.
So, then the other option would be to create us as a district, you threw out this plan, which would make us a separate district, number 13. But I'd like to explore, at least talk about, if we didn't become a, our own district, but we became absorbed within a current district, and you had to reconfigure your districts, then we would still have two officers within our district, but now our district would be so much bigger and expanded, you wouldn't have two officers within a six-mile radius of the city.
Part of what you said is yes, part of it is no.
Okay.
Because I would be including it with another district, it would lessen the amount of deputies that would be assigned to here. Those deputies would not be solely working just calls within the city of Dunellen. They would respond to any calls in the county as the watch commander so sees fit. And most of the time, let's say this end of the county, they may not go past the city limits of Ocala. But however, as you're well aware of last night, the circumstances changes every night. It depends on the calls for service and what we have to handle. If I have the entire Dunellen District working what I had last night, that means people from the southeast end of the county, or my deputies from the southeast of the county, or the north end of county, has got to come this way to work, handle calls. The other thing that's not in the equation, or I didn't mention, is I would have to have another district office. Now, the Dunellen District Office handles the Dunellen District, but when I add deputies, that means that increases the staffing or the personnel that would have to be in that building. That building's at its full capacity. So, a district building would be required.
Very good. And one final question, within your 12 districts, how many deputies do you have on duty at one time, in one shift?
10.
10. So, district number 12 would have 10 deputies that are on the road at one time, or 10 are rotated?
No. 10 are rotated.
Rotated.
Correct.
Okay. And that would mean for each district, you would have two on duty while the other eight are probably off?
Correct.
Which is exactly, you know, what we have here. The difference would be that it would no longer be two deputies or policemen within a small city, it would be two deputies within a large district.
That is correct. And to your point in which you were making, mayor, a few minutes ago, regarding the redistricting. And yes, redistricting would be required. Now, what comes with redistricting is the assignment of the amount of deputies to a particular district. And that number, hence the reason I told you it's a six, or a fewer number, would be because of that redistricting. So, that means if, even if I had six, that means you would only get one deputy added to the district that would help police this particular area.
Understood. Okay. You've answered my questions. Anything else?
And just to restate that the sheriff's officers do not do traffic calls.
That is correct.
And we have, I'm sure chief can tell you, numerous traffic calls all the time.
You have 200 a year.
Do we?
Average. It can go up and down. Being I worked traffic, pardon me, I worked traffic for 12 years. Crashes are hard to predict. They rise and they fall. You might have one good year, and then you'll have another year that you are slammed. Luckily, your fatalities are almost nil, okay? But I also don't want to jinx you either. So, yes, keep that in mind. You lose that service right there. Doesn't mean FHP won't take care of you. FHP will respond, but.
The benders.
I'm here to tell you, you're going to wait a while.
Yeah, exactly.
And I don't mean, please, and if media's in here, don't go repeating the same, I vass and FHP. Because they do a good job. FHP does an outstanding job, and they work hard. So, just keep that in mind.
I think one more clarification that would really be helpful for public consumption is if we, if we became part of a district, let's say we became part of District 12, and you reconfigured it as you had to, could you just generally give us an idea how big that district would be? For instance, would it go all the way to 200? Would it go all the way to Lake Tropicana? How big would that district be?
I had a feeling you were going to ask that. I think, off the top of my head, don't hold me strictly to this number, my Dunellen District is 50, 60 square miles?
Wow.
Okay? You are seven square miles?
Less.
Well, a whole lot less.
Yes.
I told you the population. They go, you know, outside of transit population. And let me give you a little bit of tidbit information. Unlike when he and I was hired, you could go off, and that's one of the reasons why I hate crime rates, okay? I really hate it, because crime rates are based on your residential population, okay? As I just told you, your residential population is 1,900, okay? But however, summer, you rise very quickly. That's transit population, so your deputies are servicing an enormous amount. I mean, your officers are servicing a lot of amount, along with my deputies. That same thing happens in the county. Now, my population is 300, roughly around 380,000, but however, I promise you, we are servicing well over 500,000 people a day. And I'm stretched at the max. So, the coverage, and think about that, what you just said, take that square mile and your response times, in which you probably get phenomenal response times, just like it did in the city. You're not going to get that, unfortunately, from a deputy, unless they just by luck is eating that blue gear.
Sounds good.
Right. Because I'm occasionally there, all right? But response times will not be three minutes. Response times could be ranging, depends on the call, okay? Let me clarify that. Again, media, they love to misquote me. It could be 45 minutes. Now, granted, a call like last night was not a 45-minute response. We were there very rapidly. It just depends, because it's like a trauma center. The call determines how and when we respond, how fast we respond as well, too. So, you're generic. I don't want to call them routine, because there is no routine call for us. Can be up to 45 minutes.
So, I think, chief, I've heard you quote that our response time is averaged out to be about three minutes within the city limits. So, Sheriff, to juxtapose that, what is the county's average response time to a call?
I don't have that one off the top of my head. Wasn't expecting that question. You got me.
Yeah. Could you guarantee it's three minutes or less?
No, I cannot.
I didn't think so.
No, I cannot guarantee it's three minutes.
In your years of law enforcement, a police department that averages three minutes to a call, would you say that's good, medium, excellent? What would you say that is?
Very good.
Very good.
It is. You don't get that everywhere.
Yeah.
Really don't.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes. You said between the, the population, between the city limits of Dunellen and outside the city limits of Dunellen, is it total of like 24,000? Did you say 24?
I did say that, but that, that 24,000 is just my Dunellen District. It's not your city. That number does not include the city limits.
Oh, okay. So, just your Dunellen District?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you for clarification.
Anything else? Sheriff, really, thank you for coming. I think you moved us up five lengths today.
Glad I could be of help, all right? Glad for this time.
Excellent. Okay. We move on to item number eight on the agenda. It's Resolution 2021-05, Council Code of Conduct Amendment. What this is, is to reconfigure our workshops where the public now has the opportunity to speak, not only at the end of the workshop, but at the beginning of the workshop. At this time, is there any public comment on this proposed resolution? No public comment on it? Do we have a motion?
So, I moved, I've moved Resolution 2021-05 to be read by title only. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. Call or vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Unanimous. Now, we move to.
Excuse me, ma'am. I may be reading.
Okay, please.
Resolution RES 2021-05, a resolution of the City of Dunellen amending Resolution Number 2013-15 regarding the City Council Code of Conduct to amend rules of order regarding public comment and public participation, providing severability conflicts in an effective
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move Resolution 2021-05 to be approved. I second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Now officially, at all workshops, you can speak at the beginning and at the end of the workshops. Now, we move to number nine, Ordinance 2021-01, City Clerk Duties. This is the definition of the expansion of duties of the city clerk. Do we have any public comments on agenda item number nine? Okay. All right. So, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion for this ordinance?
I move Resolution 2021-01 to be read by title only, please.
Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion on this?
Yes, I do want to ask the question to be sure that I'm looking in this, looking at this as it's meant. We are using the alternative language for Section 2104.1 in regard to the undermining information, appoint, hire, or when necessary for the good of the service, suspend, etc. Where notwithstanding the provision and ultimate authority to appoint and terminate department heads shall lie with the city council. Is that correct?
That's it. Council's discretion. Per the, the last meeting, what the direction ultimately was, was to bring back alternative language. That has not been inserted into the ordinance that was just read by title only. So, that would take council to insert that language and replace the language in Section 1 by motion. And council may do that. It does not change the title.
Then I would move that we insert that language as a motion.
Andrew, could you repeat for us what the insertion is?
Would you like me to read it, sir?
Yes.
I will read it as a will read. There is really only addition here. There's only one strike-through word, that's administrator. So, it's fairly simple. I will just leave that word administrator out. That is only in there where it refers to city clerk role, or would have referred previously to city administrator. And I'll read the first part of the section that precedes it, since it's part of the list. Otherwise, it wouldn't make any sense to anyone who didn't have it in front of them. "The city clerk shall be responsible to the city council for the proper administration of the affairs of the city and may head one or more departments. To that end, the city clerk shall have the power to," and this would be the alternative language, "appoint, hire, and/or when necessary for the good of the service, suspend or remove non-department head officers and employees of the city, except as otherwise limited by this section, the city's ordinances, and/or as provided by the charter or law. Notwithstanding this provision, ultimate authority to permanently appoint and terminate department heads shall lie with the city council with department head appointment decisions requiring a three-fifths vote, and department head termination decisions requiring a three-fifths vote, following the city clerk's initiation of the termination process, except as otherwise specifically indicated by the charter or law." "The city clerk shall be responsible for making recommendations to city council for permanent department head appointment..." department head appointments, and for initiating the department head termination process at his/her sole discretion, and making recommendations to city council regarding the same. The city clerk shall have authority to temporarily fill a department head vacancy for a period not to exceed 90 days. When necessary for the good of service, the city clerk may suspend department heads. The city clerk may authorize the head of a department or office to appoint, suspend, or remove subordinates in such department or office. The city clerk shall exercise no authority over the city's chief of police or police personnel."
Yes.
Question.
Yes.
I had already made the motion to be read by title only. So, how can Ms. Kenny change my motion?
Because at this point, the title of the ordinance, well, the title of the ordinance has not changed. If that were to change, it would require going back and another reading. But, the title, as being as general as it is, is just contemplating a change in the city clerk duties. It's not specific enough that this couldn't be inserted and exchanged in. So council has that discretion.
Okay. Thank you.
Jan, do you have anything to add?
No comments and no questions.
Ms. Nina? Louise?
Uh, my position is as it was earlier, that I would like that insertion in terms of the motion that we're considering.
Is that, what do we have to do to insert that?
Well, the motion has been made, and I do not recall if it was seconded prior to discussion. I believe it was.
Yes.
We never finished the first motion.
Pardon me?
Never finished the first motion to read by title. I still, I don't have a vote, and I still haven't read it by title.
Okay.
So, we're still kind of in the middle of that.
If that's where we are procedurally, then in that case, they can just be placed in there, and to, council can provide direction to staff to replace the Section 1 in the current ordinance with the alternate language, and then it can be read. After it's read, council can still make additional changes to the ordinance if it wishes to workshop the ordinance. So it doesn't really matter the order you go in, because the title is not changing.
Okay.
I apologize, I was under the impression that the title had been read. I was so focused on...
That's why I was a little confused. Sorry about that.
So Mandy, you want to read it?
I need a vote. You need a vote? Okay, so let me just clarify this, from my knowledge and for the citizens. So right now, we are just without anything being added. Nothing is being added as it is presented. We are reading it by title only now. Then, make sure I'm saying this right, then, when we go to approve it, then, if somebody wants to make a motion to add this, they can make the motion, and then we can all decide if we want to add it or not. Am I correct or no?
That is fine.
Thank you.
Just thank you.
Okay.
So now we can vote. I think it's what we just heard.
Okay.
All in favor?
Do you have to read it?
We have to vote on it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, it passes.
Thank you. Ordinance Number ORD 2021-01, An Ordinance of the City of Dunellen, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Officers and Employees, Division 2, City Manager, and creating Division 3 Finance Officer of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dunellen, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. I move Resolution 2021-01 to be approved.
We have a second.
Now, you'll have to help me here.
Well, we didn't, wait a minute. We didn't get a chance yet to have a second.
All right, thank you.
We have to have a second first, yes. We have a second.
Yes.
All a second does is just allows it for discussion, right? So we have a second. Okay. Ms. Kenny? Did you want to say something?
Uh, well, I appreciate Councilwoman Hancher giving us some direction on this, and I would like to proceed with your help, exactly what is most appropriate to get this language inserted. So if you have language that you want to recommend, I'm here.
Okay. Language that I would like to recommend?
Recommend in terms of my request, to see that we do in fact have this language inserted in our new ordinance.
Okay. This just depends on where you are procedurally, because prior, there was already a motion outstanding to read by title only, then another motion was made, rather than proceeding with the original motion. So where you are procedurally now, and so long as discussion is closed, and somebody's ready to make a motion, then we have to proceed with that motion. So if there's a second on that motion, that will be voted upon. If that were to fail, then alternate motions can be made.
Well, my understanding is that this insertion in terms, and I'm particularly interested in notwithstanding the provision, the authority to appoint and terminate department heads shall lie with the city council. I am still not certain as to when that will be allowed to be inserted.
If it were to pass, and it's...
Only if it's passed.
Correct. That was not my motion. My motion did not include that, and Ms. Williams seconded that motion without that verbiage that you were looking at.
So Andrew, where we're at right now, is, I think, council, because we discussed this, and I think there was pretty much a consensus on it, that we wanted the city clerk's duties to include being able to temporarily hire or temporarily suspend someone based on, you know, parameters of certain days, 90 days. Right?
Point.
Point, yes.
So, that wasn't what the consensus was, because I was not for that to put in. I wanted it that the city clerk, not this council, sit up here and hire and fire people. I mean, it's not in the best interest of the citizens or the employees to have to worry if three of us want them hired or fired. That is an issue. And I mean, and I'm going to say this, and it is with truly, I mean, I am truly saying this, as a working together as one body, in the new world of hiring and firing people, there are so many things we cannot ask, and we cannot say, that we are not HR personnel. Mandy, I mean, my sister is in HR, and so she and I had a long talk this weekend. Mandy is HR. There are so many rules and regulations now that what people can say and not say. And in order to protect each and every one of us from inadvertently saying the wrong thing, hiring you because, I'm just picking on you, I like your blue shirt. I mean, it can be that simple nowadays. So that is a huge worry for me. Also, there are some very simple instructions that this council has been given, and we don't seem to be able to follow them thoroughly. So I really do worry about this council, or any council, for that fact, sitting up here and making decisions about hiring and firing. Now, I will say, and Troy, I'm picking on you now, when Dawn was here, and she had to hire someone for public works, she came to the council and said, hey, I have Troy, I have spoken to him, I want to put him on the 90-day probation, and then she gave us updates. And she made sure that we were all aware what was going on with that new department head. And then when it came time to hire him officially, she came back to us and said, okay, Troy's 90 days are about over. I am going to hire him on permanently. Is there any discussion? So I think what we're asking our HR person, city clerk, whatever your name, position will be, oh, great one, they do that already. They come to this council, they just don't, you know, kind of blindside us. When Chief had to fill two positions in the city, he spoke to us, and told us what he was doing, and did we have any questions? Did we have any concerns? And that is what good management does. We do not, what's that word, micromanage? We don't micromanage up here. I have sat on councils that have micromanaged, and it is just a failure of things to come.
Okay. Anybody else want a comment? Please, please, please be recognized by the chair before you speak, and once you have spoken, you can't speak a second time until everybody else has had an opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Ms. Kenny?
Um, I have some sympathy, I think, in terms of Councilwoman Hancher's understanding, but my understanding is, not with the HR workings of the government, but rather with our charter amendment. Our charter amendment is very clear that the charter of Dunellen will be amended to eliminate the position of city manager, so that the city department heads are managed by the city council or their designated. And I don't know how we can do that without the ability to hire or fire our department heads. Now, the natural protocol of something like that is, obviously, everything subordinate would be for the city clerk, and if she had any issues, she would be coming, and they would be fully vented. And I would think that would be consistent with the will of the people in terms of the 2016 amendment. So I think some of your fears are detailed fears that would come way later, and I don't think that anybody would be concerned about the ability, or would the people not want to elect people who would be willing to determine their department heads. That just seems to me like a natural progression in terms of our charter amendment. Otherwise, the city council is not, has not been in a position of actually leading. We don't even have control of our department heads?
Ms. Williams?
I, thank you, Valerie. I really appreciate your comments. And I have been thinking about this, and I says, here we have Mandy Roberts, over 20 years' experience in city government. We trust her to take on some of the responsibilities of an administrator, but we don't trust her, this lady is a certified municipality clerk. She knows the ins and outs of what's going on within this city government, and we don't trust her to hire and fire. We want the city council to do that? This lady has all these years of experience, and I say that I trust her to make the right decisions, ask the right questions, document if there's any issues. That's just my, that's just me. That's my opinion, to replace that responsibility on the city council, who are not fully trained in city government, at least I can say that I am not, okay? And I don't understand all the daily activities, the daily functions that's going on with all these department heads. And you want me to agree to hire or fire somebody? I don't agree with it. Sorry.
Okay, very good. Ms., go ahead.
I, um...
Speak into the microphone.
Yeah. First of all, Mandy is the greatest, there's no doubt about it. It's not about trusting or not trusting Mandy's judgments. Mandy, however, is not going to be here forever, any more than you and I are going to be here forever, okay? So, let's look a little bit further down the road. My experiences come through Marion County School Board, department heads, our principal, and when someone violates a rule within our school, principal does not have the explicit authority to hire, I'm sorry, to fire that person. Okay, when I was a department head, I was consulted when there was a position open, and given an opportunity to interview, and give my recommendation to the principal. However, when it came to a point where that person violated some rule of the school board, and they had to be terminated, that was not my job. It was not even the principal's job. They simply passed that judgment call, the report, the investigation, and so on, to the school board. And I think here's why. Because you can trust whoever is in charge, okay, and believe that they are making the best call, but there are liabilities involved, and Valerie brought that up. Okay, there's always going to be liabilities involved, and I don't want to put all those liabilities on Mandy, or whoever's going to follow her. It needs to be a council judgment, simply because the judgments of one, two, three, four, or five people are better in the long run than one person, and we would be simply backing up based on the information provided by our city clerk.
Yeah. Just...
Does anybody else want to speak again? Now, keep in mind, we spent well over an hour with these exact same arguments at the workshops. We've, you know, so I'm going to limit how much longer we're going to talk on this, because we're basically repeating what has been really discussed at one.
Well, but you said there was consensus to do it, and there wasn't. So, there was not a clear definition or a clear hearing of what was being said, I don't think. But to your point, and, you know, thank y'all, but it really, again, and if you remember, our attorney said, "The city clerk cannot make recommendations to us who to hire and who to fire." We will have to, that is correct, right?
So, when it comes to hiring, what the city clerk can do is, they do make recommendations, but they cannot shortlist and they cannot eliminate. So there is a recommendation there. Now, under the alternative language, when it comes to firing, you already have a sitting department head that has been, and we're talking about department heads only, for purposes of this conversation, so I just want to make that distinguish, you know, that distinguishment there. But you have a sitting department head that has already been hired under that procedure, that was to be enacted by the city council. So in order for a firing to take place, the city clerk, via this alternative language, at his or her sole discretion, that means only that individual has the power to initiate the firing process, would then begin the firing process, gathering whatever, if, you know, if there's a property interest, there has to be a certain procedure for that, but going through that initial process and then bringing it to council. So only then would council, then, you know, there would, depending on whatever the procedure would be, because it depends on the nature of the position, but all of that would be gone through, and then eventually wind up as council's ultimate decision.
So, again, just from my clarification, the city council cannot initiate a suspension or a firing of anyone, of city department heads?
Not for the department heads, no. Not for this language. That would start with, on a staff level. In other words, they would be starting the procedure for finding cause and so forth for a firing, and then bringing that to council for a decision. And that would be a three out of five decision for termination.
It wouldn't have to be a super majority, though?
Three out of five, for this language.
Andrew, I think, just to try to make this clear, what council is looking for is the opportunity to vote, that council has the final say on who's hired and who's terminated.
Correct.
When it comes to department heads...
That's consistent with the...
And that's the language, myself, I want to have an opportunity to vote on.
So, Mr. White, Mayor White, let me ask you this, then. And I'm trying to compromise, you know, I'm trying to figure out a good working relationship here. So, let me ask this... So let me ask this. If, if what you're wanting is to have that final authority to say, yes, this is the, Troy Slattery is the best person for pub, public works department head, right? Sorry, Troy. So would it be acceptable to the other, to the whole council, if we said something like, "The city clerk," regardless who that person is, "the city clerk will hire and fire, except they have to get final approval by the, by the council?"
That is more or less where we are at. That's not possible under the hiring decision because since the ultimate authority would rest in council, essentially, the city clerk, by making a hiring decision prior to that, would be depriving council as, as an agent sort of process of being able to make that full decision. So there is case law and opinions that do not allow that in that sense. As far as terminations, that's exactly what you described there. That has to be started by the city clerk. Not, not quite exactly because there's not an actual firing going on, but she could make, or he, um, could make recommendations to city council on the firing. So very, very similar. The only distinction is that there's not a final, ultimately, would, I, I think that the way that it would have to work under that scenario that you, that you presented, would, that there would have to be a hiring and then an appeal to city council. There would have to be an opportunity to appeal.
Appeal why?
A firing.
Oh.
And there actually is, there are some, oftentimes, if there's a property interest, there is a required appeal anyhow. So it's, it's very similar, the way it would be set up.
So Andrew, I'm just, I'm just trying to simplify this because this is not real complicated.
Simplifying is just like...
What the council, members of the council, I'll speak for myself, is simply what I'm looking for, is the city clerk can do the investigative work to find applicants for a department head. The city clerk can do evaluations of department heads and report to council what her beliefs and feelings are, whether they're negative or positive. With the people that we're looking to hire, she can make recommendations but has to give us the whole list. So she's heavily involved in the recommendation process, but that's it. It's not that she has to do certain things before council can respond to that. In other words, she has to initiate the termination. I want it to be, I want it to be very cut and clean, that simply the final decision of hiring or terminating a department head is at the feet of the council with the city's clerk's input, which is only recommendations. That's what I'm looking for.
Yes, that's consistent with the alternative language.
And I, I, I don't want any language in there that forces council to have to not be able to respond until a, the city clerk has determined whether or not someone needs to be, uh, terminated or not. I, I, it's just an advisory position. It's recommending. It's not part of the process in order to make council's decision.
So you're looking for council to have the unilateral authority to fire without it being initiated by the city clerk? Is that correct?
I'm looking for her input, but I'm not looking at her input is tied into, until she, I don't want to say, see, until that position reports that certain, that someone should be terminated, that you can't terminate them unless the city clerk recommends them to be terminated.
Then the alternative language would require some amendment.
I am confused now.
To be consistent with that, if that were council's wishes. Because currently, under the language, the city clerk would have to commence the firing process.
Because, Bill, and I'm trying to understand, so what you want to do is, you want this city council to go to the city clerk, whoever that is, and say, "I want Troy fired. Fire him. Start the process." Is that what this council wants?
No.
That's what you just told him that we wanted to do?
No.
Can we ask the public?
Simply, it is that the final decision, the final decision to hire or fire a department head sits right here at the council.
But it is only initiated by the city clerk. We, the council, cannot direct anyone to...
No.
...hire or fire anyone.
I, I don't, I don't agree with that. It does, it doesn't have to be initiated by someone who's the city clerk and, and the council cannot do anything until the city clerk initiates the process. No, that's not what I'm looking for.
Then why would anybody come and work for this city when three people up here can fire you?
Okay, Andrew, we, we have really talked this and we're now talking it again. So I would like to put the language that I'm looking for and give council the opportunity to vote on it.
So where you are at procedurally, you have a, a motion and a second. Now, that can either proceed for a vote or somebody else in council could make a motion to amend. If that were seconded, then alternative language could be presented, uh, for that motion or it's made with a first motion and then that's seconded. Discussion can be had on that, but it must be limited only as to the wisdom of whether or not to amend the language and not to a debate on the original motion, which regards the language. So in other words, if council would like to amend the language, now would be the decide, time to decide what amendment should be prior to that motion being made or whether or not someone's going to make that motion. Procedurally, that's where we are at.
Do we have a motion to amend?
Yes.
But to make, to make it clear, um, if that's a motion to, I suppose you could do it by a motion to amend by fill in the blank. So what you could say is, "I would like to amend that motion. I'm making a motion to amend it." Fill in the blank. That's actually part of the language from Robert's rules. Uh, and that could be seconded and then you could discuss exactly how you want to fill that in. Because this language will need to change slightly. As it's written right now, it requires the city clerk to initiate firings. So we would need to decide on some language to make that change.
Okay. Do we have a motion to amend?
I make a motion to amend with the fill in the blank or whatever you're putting, if you can help me on that.
For changing the language to section 204.1, part 1.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Is there anybody who still hasn't said what they need to say? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Nay?
I oppose.
Okay.
And I don't even know what I just voted on. I mean, we don't even know the wording in there.
It's a fill in the blank to, so it's, it's a motion to amend the language, to amend the original motion so that the council can amend the language in the relevant section, which is 2104.1, part 1. And then now council will decide how that language is going to be. And then from there can proceed to have a...
Andrew, we, we've got it. We've got it. So...
Mr. White, he was explaining it for that. I can understand it, sir.
Okay. Continue.
Okay. So, so from here, council will decide on the language that they want to consider and then vote on that.
Turn phones off, please.
Okay, Ms., we'll go down the line. Ms. Kenny, do you have any language you recommend?
Uh, yes, I'm looking at the language, alternative language for section 2-104-1 that has been provided for us previously by the, uh, city attorney. And, uh, I am looking at language, "At this point, hire and/or when necessary for the good of the service, suspend or remove all non-department head officers except otherwise limited by this section, the city ordinances as are provided by charter or law. Uh, notwithstanding," and this would be critical, "notwithstanding this provision, ultimate authority to permanently appoint and terminate department heads shall lie with the city council with department head appointment decisions requiring a three-fifth vote and department head termination decisions requiring a three-fifth vote following the city clerk's initiation of the termination process, except as otherwise specifically indicated by charter or law."
Okay. Ms. Williams, do you have anything to...
I've already made my comments.
Okay. Vice Mayor? Ms. Covich?
Good.
Okay. So just, just for clarity, um, what, what we're voting on is, what I'm after is just simply that the council has the final say.
So to make that change, now, the language we heard was just rereading a portion of the, the language. If council's desire is to follow what the mayor has indicated and remove the discretion of the city clerk to commence the termination process, making that a requirement, what I would suggest is that the sentence that states currently, "The city clerk shall be responsible for making recommendations to city council for permanent department head appointments and for initiating the department head termination process at his or her discretion and making recommendations to city council regarding same." That should be changed to, "The city clerk shall be responsible for making recommendations to city council for permanent department head appointments and terminations."
Yes. It's very clean and very understandable.
So you have a motion with a fill in the blank. If that's where council wants to go, then ask that to be inserted, vote on that. That would change the original motion.
So we need another motion to, to deal with what you just read?
It would be cleanest.
Okay.
Technically, that's not the, the formal way of Robert's rules, but I think it would make the most sense procedurally to go ahead and make that motion, to use that language in the secondary motion, which changes the primary motion. This is how we get kind of confusing.
Okay.
So that way, we know that council either agrees with that language or does not. Once that's done, we can go back to the original motion.
Do we have a motion?
Can we ask the public? Please stop whispering.
Uh, yes. Um, I think we're clear on that portion, uh, but for clarity, I would amend the verbiage that, that the attorney just gave us.
I'm sorry.
Well, he did...
As I understand the motion, sir, she would like to have that language inserted that just removes that, uh, discretion from the city clerk. So the way that I read the sentence the second time.
Discretion.
Well, that it would state, "The city clerk shall be responsible for making recommendations to city council for permanent department head appointments and terminations."
Yes. Okay. Jan? Okay. Do we need to make a motion on it again?
The motion's been made, so it would just be seconded.
And it's, it's been seconded?
If that's council's will and then voted on.
No.
Hmm?
No.
Is there, okay, do we have a second on this?
Seconded.
Jan? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
So now that motion's prevailed three to two, that language is inserted back in the original motion and has been amended accordingly. At this time, if you wish to consider, since Robert's rules, again, this is a very complicated procedure with three layers of motions, if you wish to ask for public comment, that may be ideal at this point. And then vote on the final motion.
Good with that. Do we have any public comment that would like to comment on what we've just discussed? Okay, Ms. Dunn?
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendrix Drive. Again, I, I fail to understand why our city council doesn't want to return hiring and firing of department heads to the people that represent, that were elected by the people. As much as I love the staff of this city, they were not elected. They do not answer to the people. That is just so simple. And they don't even live in our city. You do. Why is that such a hard concept? And why would you want to shirk that duty? When you're talking about giving, awarding a $60,000 salary to someone, it's a pretty big deal. So that's all I wanted to say. I just don't understand why something like this has to be so complex. But thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, public comment is over. We have a motion and a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes three to. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Mandy, where are we?
Number 10.
Number 10. Thank you very much. Okay, number 10 is the continuation of the discussion on Nine Island Cove. Do we have anyone in the audience that would, anybody signed up on that? Anybody?
I don't know if anybody signed up. Do we have more than one sheet out there?
No. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak to item number 10? Dr. Eno?
I'm Dr. Eno. I live at 9220 Southwest 193rd Circle up in Rainbow Springs. I'm the president of Rainbow River Conservation. We volunteer to, um, do the work to, at Nine Island Cove. It's a park, pass a park to the city. I made that presentation here Wednesday evening and, uh, we're committed to do, uh, the work and raise the funds to help get this accomplished. And, uh, I think my presentation emphasized that Wednesday evening. And frankly, all we're in need of now to proceed in that direction is to have the council approve, uh, a prospectus. And I provided a draft of that to you last Wednesday evening. After I got home, I sent it to all council members as well as Mandy. So, uh, unless there's some objection to that or, uh, some kind of a edit or modification, I would be appreciative of the council voting to approve that prospectus, put it in RRC's hands, and we would run with it to try to get Florida Forever listing for the Nine Island Cove. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Oh. Thank you.
Sir.
Okay.
Have questions?
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you for getting that over there the other night. I appreciated it. Um, like I said, I went back through my files and kind of looked over everything from 2019 when, um, Mr. Paul came up and gave us that. So basically, the, um, prospectus you sent us was the same one that he did with a few minor changes, um, that we had been presented back in 2019. Um, I did make a phone call up to the state to, uh, Forever and Florida Forever and spoke with, um, uh, Ms. Murphy. Um, and I did have some questions. Um, I flat out asked her, can a third party that does not own a piece of property, um, put in an application for their vacant, for their personal property, like you doing it to my house? Um, she said that in order to do that, that the third party would have to contact the, each individual parcel owner and receive either a letter from them or a form letter. Um, that was not provided, and I know that he provided letters that he wrote to the property owners last time, but there's been no new letters sent out this year, right?
They made a commitment before. They put it in the hands of a realtor and, uh... They put it in the hands of a realtor, and they still stand by that, but as far as getting the Florida Forever designation for the property, it has nothing to do with the actual purchase of the property, at which time there would have to be contracts signed.
No, 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 sir. That's not, that wasn't my point. According to Ms. Murphy, I specifically asked her, can a third party, RRC in this instance, or the city of, I don't know how you want to put it, go and ask for their property to be placed on the Florida Forever, try to get on the A-list? And she said, no, they cannot, that they have to have a letter from the property owners giving authorization to you to do it. And we have not been provided that information.
Paul, have you got any further information?
Also, they highly recommended that they not be able, once the seller has the property, that the owners have it, that they really prefer them not to take it off the list. They can, but they prefer them not to. Yes, sir?
Paul, your nickname?
Paul Marafino, 19544, Southwest 82nd Place Road. As you correctly stated, a year ago, we were here on the same topic, and I sent letters out to all of the various property owners saying, "These three parcels are yours, and we would like to put it on the Florida Forever list." All but two of them responded. Some of them have a realtor trying to sell. Others woke up and said, "Yeah, I do have that little lot there. I would like to know what, you know, what the price is," and of course, we can't do that, so they were interested. Once we prepare this application again, I will send out additional letters, which was the proper procedure in the past. They don't have to respond. In fact, one of them has passed away, and another we can't locate. We have written letters to them, and we don't seem to have a working address, although they pay their taxes. Isn't that interesting? So, they know what's important, and I'm not important. But in any event, I don't think the procedure is straightforward. It requires about a dozen postage stamps, and there's no problem there, so.
Well, but my problem is, is that the state, I mean, because I had a problem, like, well, why can't anybody just go ask to put your property up on the, on a list?
You have to give them notice.
No, no. She said they have to, Ms. Murphy said that they have to have it in writing, that they approve, approve you trying to do something with their property.
I do not believe that's the case.
Well.
I've been through this before. We got the Florida Forever list on the Rainbow River Corridor project with 21 parcels. Three of them have been purchased. The procedure at that time was to send letters out and give your information if there are any questions, and they have the privilege of opting out. That is the process. And I cleared this previously with the administrator up there.
She, pause, she's gone now. I guess she's retired. Right. So, I'm just telling you what Ms. Murphy told me.
Well, I don't believe it's the case, but we will clarify that once we are ready to submit.
She's with the, not she's with, what's her title?
Oh, okay. Let Ms. answer.
And then also, I remember asking, and I appreciate, I'm just trying to make sure that we're, everything's being done properly.
Go ahead.
So, also, I believe I asked specifically, did we, because our problem the last time with this, and still a problem this time, is that we have to tell the governor of the state of Florida, and, you know, they're, that, here's our park management prospectus, and that we're going to, you know, it's going to be passive, but yet we put in food truck, that doesn't sound passive to me, that it's not going to take any extra, because I specifically asked you, Mr. Eno, so we're not having to tell the state of Florida that Troy, or that we have to figure out how many man-hours we're going to be over there, or how much money we're going to spend. I specifically asked you, and you said, "Oh, that was erroneous last time. I don't know what that was, why that was, why that was told to y'all." Well, I went back in all my notes, and again, the, and I can never say this word, prospectus that you sent us shows that, you know, we're going to have to have the police department go out there, we're going to have to have Public Works go out there, so we're having to try and come up with a way to pay for all this. And I just don't feel comfortable telling somebody that when we don't know how much it's going to cost, we don't know how many additional staff will be necessary.
Vice Mayor, this isn't, that's off the topic. This topic is strictly to see if this piece of property is eligible for the Florida Forever program. It has nothing to do with building the park and how much it's going to cost. It is simply to see if this property is eligible. What you're saying right here is off-topic, and this isn't what this, what we're talking about.
Okay, well, let me ask you. Okay, well, then, then I am, I thought we have to, he just said, Mr. Eno just said, that we have to send to the state this Nine Island Cove Park Management prospectus now, correct?
You have to display an interest in ending up with a gift, which might be a passive park purchased by some agency like Florida's Communities Trust, which we dealt with before.
Right.
And so, we're trying hard to give you a free gift, and you're just giving the good talks.
Well, it's just like getting a horse. It's never free. But my problem is, is that you're saying that we have to send out a prospectus instead of, if all we had to say is, "The city of Donellen would encourage its citizens to try and put property they don't own on the Forever Florida," that's fine. But if we're having to send in a prospectus that states what we might have to do, that's where I have an issue.
Well, let me explain that. The issue that you're wanting to get answers for is when you create a site plan and commit to making certain improvements that are money.
Right.
They want to know that you're interested in the property. The city could be the final property owner and is interested in the property. The site plan would happen when you go to a funding agency, and they say, "We would like you to give us 90% of the money," whatever that fair price that the state of Fraser says is fair, and there would be a match of 10% that we hope we can get a foundation to participate in. In any event, at that point, there'd be a site plan. As we've drafted the latest version of that, you saw one a year ago, we have withdrawn a kayak ramp from the, from the listing, and we've withdrawn a bathroom, which are cost items, and items that might require attention. We listened to what people said the last time. And we also think that there should not be an entrance from River Lane, which people objected to, but should come from the Pennsylvania Avenue, which is wider and has sidewalks, which are natural access to the thing. Now, the city, the police also already are responsible to be, to deal with that property. I don't think the public services has any mission out there at the moment, but it would be modest if the park is a passive park.
So, let me just ask real quick.
This is, one more question, and then someone else, we're going to turn it over to someone else.
So, just real quick, I'm glad I'm being timed. So, instead of having to send this prospectus out, can we just say that the city of Donellen would encourage the state of Florida to consider putting this property on?
I believe we said, as funding is available, and I believe when I talked to the previous administrator there, they gave us an example from a 4,000-acre forest park where, that was a very informal prospectus, and the conditions were that we can't say at this time how much would be committed because of the pace of involvement. This is a 10-year project. This isn't a 1-year.
Well, that's the one other thing in here, is that it says it would happen immediately, that we would immediately, once it is acquired, that it would become immediate, and that's, you know, we have so many other things going on in this city, like I know your wife asked...
A neighbor's teacher or something.
I mean...
Can I say something?
Okay. Ms. Kenny?
Yes, I think that, my understanding at this point is that we need a consensus in regard to endorsement letter. Is that not what you are needing at this point? So, my motion would be that we would move to endorse going forward with an endorsement letter.
But not a prospectus?
Correct.
That's what I kept asking.
Okay. So, is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, we're still in discussion. Okay, well, good. I mean, if we're kind of, if we're breaking it down where it's understandable, then it's worth the time. Good.
Well, thank you.
Good. All right.
Appreciate it.
All right. Any further discussion? We have a motion to...
I just want to make sure that they, our understanding, all we're going to write is a letter saying that we endorse y'all going forward and trying to do that without the prospectus.
No. They certainly won't take any interest whatsoever in providing any kind of designation to the property or being involved in any way whatsoever, if you don't have some kind of a plan in mind, some kind of an objective for even wanting the property to be labeled as Florida Forever. And unless you have some idea in mind that appeals to the Acquisition and Respiration Council, why would they give you a Florida Forever designation? Once you got the Florida Forever designation, you attempt to proceed to buy the property with grants, and you attempt to improve the property with grants, help of all sorts. All of that work takes place after the designation of Florida Forever. The Florida Forever gives you a leg up on being able to go to FCT or any other agency that would put up money in order for them to be interested to buy it. If you don't want that to ever become anything except what it is now, then you need to vote no, you don't want a park, and you don't want to endorse this prospectus. But I think that the prospectus is providing a very minimal situation by which we hope that the ARC will see fit to give us a Florida Forever designation to go ahead. Now, if this council wants to vote no on the prospectus, then RRC will take a walk.
So, was it, will we be buying it from RRC or from the...
I've said all I think I need to say. I wish the council would proceed to make up their minds as to whether or not RRC is going to go to work to try to raise the money to protect that property and protect the wildlife that's on it, and possibly develop a passive park, which will essentially cost the city almost nothing.
Okay, can we, Mandy, can we read the motion that has been seconded? Please, don't applause or don't boo.
As I understood it, the motion by Councilwoman Kenny was a motion to endorse the project, which was seconded by Councilwoman Kovach.
And to create a document that, what is it, a perspective? Is that what you're calling? For the city to sign a perspective to send in with our endorsement?
Ms. Kenny, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Well, I thought her motion was just to send in a letter, because I said, "Well, that's what I wanted. I didn't want the prospectus." And she agreed to it. Now, you're saying you want a prospectus?
The endorsement letter is, is part, the perspective is part of the endorsement letter. That's just, that's protocol, that's the language that they use, and that is the motion.
Vice Mayor, it's basically just stating why you want the property. What do you want to, what do you want to do with it? Okay, there is a motion on the floor. You have anything, and it's a second. You have anything to say? Jan?
Just so I'm clear, the motion by Councilwoman Kenny would be to endorse the application to include the prospectus.
Even though that's not what she originally said.
Andrew, can you help clean this up?
Yeah.
So, what the motion is currently is a motion to endorse. So, that would need to be amended, not by the fill-in-the-blank process before, but a motion to amend, to amend it to wherever you want to be, and that would have to be seconded. That amends the original motion. Now, what, the discussion...
Can we just withdraw the motion and start over without having to go through all that again?
Only if the person who made the motion consents to it. Now, what's not clear at this point is, there's mention of prospectus versus an endorsement as to who is going to draft the prospectus, or whether that will require subsequent approval. That is just one thing for council to consider, because if the motion stands as is, I'm not sure that council has any future say in, or there hasn't been any direction in the motion to who is going to draft the prospectus, or what the content will be. So, that's just something for council to consider in amending the motion, if that's where you wish to go.
Could that be something you could do?
I would, I think that would generally fall to staff. I could certainly review it, but I think that staff would need clear direction on what to include. And if what I'm hearing per the discussion is something minimal, then, you know, those can be suggestions taken from, you know, from whoever would be qualified to provide them, or what staff directs, I mean, what the council directs staff to obtain. And then that can come back to you for review.
Okay.
We haven't had a discussion on this prospectus. We have not had a workshop on it, Mr. Mayor.
I know we had a workshop on it six months ago.
No, sir, we had a workshop on it.
A year ago.
2019, but, and like you always say, we have new city council members, so we want to make sure that they're totally educated and that our staff has time to review it as well.
So, Andrew, your concern is, we haven't specifically spelled out the language to exactly what we're going to submit into the, to the state.
That's correct, and that's an action you could take at this meeting, or you could take it subsequently. You could take a motion to set it up for review down the line, or if you wish to make a consideration of the prospectus this evening and vote on that, you could certainly do that. My concern would be if you don't approve the language, I wouldn't want that to be a delegation that you didn't have a say in.
Well, I think, I think where council may be, I can't say until we vote on it. I think council is for going forward with the beginning process of the application. Now, how we tie that into whatever language needs to be attached to that is, I think, is where we're at right now. So, how do we, to go forward, how could we possibly do that at this point?
Well, you have a motion and a second. So, there would need, of course, to be an amendment to that, if you're going to change that motion and vote on something else. And that would be a discussion that council would need to have. I would, I would suggest that you decide now how, or at least gather some sort of a consensus, or, you know, an understanding of how you want to amend the motion, or how somebody would amend the motion, and considering, you know, how you would like to move forward as to deciding that language.
Okay. So, right now, there is some language that RRC has put together that I think fits possibly what we're looking for. Can we adopt what has been already written up?
You could. It hasn't been included in the agenda packet, so it may be something that you, you know, bring and put on the floor and read for tonight, if you're ready to do that. That would be what I would suggest, so that way that everyone is familiar with it.
Okay.
Because the citizens haven't, and if anybody was interested in it, they haven't been, had a chance to...
Bert, do you have a copy? Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Let's just at least read it. That doesn't necessarily mean we have to do anything with it.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll just go ahead and present to you then the one that we had back in 2019 that our staff did look over with their changes.
Okay, let me see.
And you were, I think everybody was also presented that information on their... And you were, I think everybody was also presented that information on there, but Mandy, that's how I got that.
When I was here Wednesday, went over the whole thing. I explained it thoroughly. I have no reason or information by which to change anything, I said Wednesday night. And at the end of the meeting or at the end of my discussion, I said that I would email it to every member of the council and Mandy. Mandy, you received it, I'm sure. And that, and you all heard me say I was going to send it for you to review and hoped that in fact you would agree with it and that you would approve it and we'd be on our way attempting to write the proposal to gain forever, Florida Forever status. So how many days, how many months do you need to read one little paper? And if you've read it and you don't like it, then vote against it. But if we don't get our walking papers tonight, I'm through because I've been horsing around with this for the longest time and all I'm getting is false information in return.
Bert, let's see this. This is what you sent out to all council members?
That's correct.
I got a copy from Mandy. I could open it.
Basically, just to go over this right here, there are eight points to it. The management goals of Nine Island Cove property. The primary management goals for Nine Island Cove property are to preserve the wetlands and natural communities along the Wipacucci River and to develop a passive natural resource-based park in historic district of the city of Dunellen. Public access will be developed in a way to protect the wetlands and habitat utilized by protected species that inhabit the river corridor. Limited facilities for passive recreation will be developed compatible with the natural beauty of the area. So I'd say number one of that is declaring itself as a natural park that's trail-based. So then you go to number two. The conditions that will affect the intensity of management. Managing this property as a passive park is not anticipated to require intense management. Number three, an estimate of the revenue generating potential of the property if appropriate. The revenue generating potential is limited. To help with maintenance costs, the city of Dunellen may choose to have parking fee, franchise for a food truck or a fee for pavilion rental for larger groups. Any revenue generated by user fees will be used solely for the maintenance of the park. Fourth item, timetable for implementing, implementing the various stages of management and for providing access to the public if applicable. The timetable for implementing the intended use of the property will begin as soon as it is acquired. That means as soon as it would be purchased.
And mind you, acquiring it is a long ways off.
Right. This has nothing to do with...
Nothing to do with...
With the application. It's, okay. Other improvements could be boardwalks, pavilions, benches, historic kiosk will evolve over a five-year period of time. So that's generally what you're, what this is stating to the state is our intent of this, if we go forward and if it all works out, which is probably a long shot, that it's going to be a passive park with, with the idea to preserve the natural environment. Description of the potential multi-use activities as described in this section. Multiple uses, usage could include walking trails, cycling, bird watching, picnicking, classroom field trips, and water studies. Also be considered will be a kiosk to memorialize the history of the phosphate industry and the mining in this location. All uses will be developed while ensuring protection of the sensitive habitat for threatened wildlife. Six, provision for protecting existing infrastructure and for ensuring the security of the project upon acquisition. Currently, there is no infrastructure on the property other than two lime rock, lime rock roads and underground water and sewer lines to the neighboring community. Access to the park will be drawn, will be on a dawn-to-dusk basis. The Dunellen police will periodically patrol the park. Dunellen public service staff will do routine maintenance on the park and hire contractors on occasional need for the larger product, projects. Marion County Fire Rescue will continue to provide emergency services. Seven, the anticipated cost of management and projected, projected sources of revenue, including legislated appropriations to fund management needs. Improvement will be via grants. Operation and maintenance costs for community activities and passive recreation will be provided by the City of Dunellen CRA funds and general revenue funding. Eight, recommendations as to how many employees will be needed to manage the property and recommendations as to whether local governments, volunteer groups, former landowner, or other interested parties can be involved in the management of the property. City of Dunellen will assume the responsibility for managing the park, utilizing existing staff. City personnel will maintain the park features and facilities and the public service department will monitor and conduct natural resource activities. A friends volunteer group will be welcomed and encouraged to become involved in the management and light maintenance of the park. So my read on this is that if this all came together, if it was listed, we got the grants and we decided to do this, the idea is to keep this park basically in its natural environment to protect the wildlife, the animals, and basically make it a walking trail with picnic tables, benches, and it's on the Wipacucci River where you can enjoy walking these trails and see in the Wipacucci River. This is, this is what we would call the prospectus that would go in with the application, correct? Bert?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, and it's, it's a wish list, you might say. And they can grant Florida Forever standing for the sake of the fact that you have these kinds of intentions, but anywhere along the line, lots of things could happen that would prevent us from accomplishing what we are after or what we set out to do. And in the process of seeking a buyer, Florida Communities Trust for example, or supplemental money to that even, we would be informing the city of the steps. We're talking years. We're talking a year, two years? If we're fortunate enough to garner that money, if we're fortunate enough to be able to talk FCT or another organization into forking over a half a million dollars.
So to boil this down, I mean, I like to really make it easy to understand. We need to send in an application to start the process to show that we're interested.
Well, we're writing the application.
An application needs to be sent. And there has to be a description why, what you're wanting to do with it if you get it, right? And this is what goes with it.
Something that's appealing, yes.
Yeah, you have to give a reason why you're asking the state to come up with the money to purchase the property. This is the reason. The reason is we want to capture this property that's on environmentally sensitive land in a historic area where our phosphate mining started. We'd like to capture that, retire it, and make it into a passive park.
I think it would be a great attraction.
So, okay. Everybody knows what the perspective would be that would be attached to the application.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In regards to number seven where it says anticipated cost of management and projected sources of revenue, including legislative appropriations to fund management needs, and the one that the city of Dunellen and our former staff, our staff did back in 2019, they reworded it, they recommended rewording it. Develop, instead of doing improvements will be via grants, I mean, because we all can't rely on grants 24/7. Operation maintenance costs for community activities and passive recreation will be provided by the City of Dunellen CRA and general funds, all 1,800 citizens. So what the, they recommended was development, operation, and maintenance costs for community activities and passive recreation will be provided by City of Dunellen via grants, CRA funds, and general revenue funds as available because we can't guarantee that those funds will be available.
We're not.
I, I'm just trying to make a suggestion. So that is something that I would highly recommend us doing and adding to that. And then as far as when number eight regarding how many employees will be needed to manage the property, which I could have sworn I specifically asked, did we have to worry about this? The city of Dunellen will assume responsibility for managing the park, utilizing existing staff. Troy has said, even last time we were all here, that that is not possible. And that's why I just don't want to put a statement in a document that we are sending to the state of Florida saying something that we know is not a true statement. We know that we cannot do a good job on that area with our existing staff. And these are the kind of things that worry me. I just don't want to make those assumptions.
And I understand it.
And then it says, and then it says, city personnel will maintain the park features and facilities, and the public service department will monitor and conduct natural resource activities. Well, when you tell me conduct natural resource activities, it sounds great. Please, don't get me wrong. It sounds wonderful. But when I think of that, I think of when we took all the kids, the second graders, up to the head springs and we had the staff up at the head springs to, you know, tell, show the kids about the different foliage and the animals and the river. That, and then we're not adding any existing staff. I mean, no offense, but Troy's really great, but he's not an environmentalist. I mean, he's not a biologist. He's not a teacher. So for us to again put statements...
No, 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 no. Please, please.
And for us, and again, I think it's a great source to do. I'm not saying I don't think that's a great idea, but it's just to put it in a statement when we know that our staff cannot do that, that worries me. And I would love to perhaps do a volunteer, not a volunteer group, but do like a board within the city as a, to be recommendations for things like that. Those are the kind of things that I would like to see in this wording, not just a volunteer group who's now going to be involved in management, a volunteer group in management. They still need the control of the city of Dunellen before they can go and do any management of a property that we own. Those are the types of things that I would ask that we would look at.
And Vice Mayor, I would say your, your points are good points, but they're points that can be discussed and decided after this is listed. If we find that we don't have the staff, if we don't have the money, if we don't have the funds, if we can't do it, we just simply don't go any further. It just remains listed. It just remains listed and we say, well, we can't do it. We took a shot at it and it's over with.
So there's no...
These are, these are the discussions. If this thing's listed and the council says, let's go forward and let's do this, then we talk about how are we going to do it?
So, so there's no discussion, there's no saying that additional staffs will be necessary? I mean, if we flat out know that, why wouldn't we put that in there? I'm, I'm just simply asking. I mean, why wouldn't we put in knowledge?
This is a tender place because here's, here's the real deal, okay?
We don't have a full plan at this point.
Florida Forever A listing opens the doors to no less than three other state grants, okay?
Right.
No less than three other state grants, plus there are other sources to go to. The management of this facility will flow along with what attributes are added through time through grants. We cannot say today what it's going to look like in five years until we secure the grant money. If we don't secure the grant money, we don't have to pay rent on it, we don't pay taxes on it, there's no electric bill, okay? It's a natural state. It's a piece of property.
Okay, I'm about ready to end discussion.
But I don't understand why we can't add some different wording. That's all I'm asking.
The state determines these questions. It's a, it's a formatted question.
Okay, stop, stop. Let's, let's end, let's end discussion on this. Ms. Kenny, you have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, I believe, that would need to be amended. Would you consider dropping your motion and we can start over and get this the way we want to do it without amending your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
You're making a motion to drop it?
Yes, sir.
So how do we undo a motion that's been seconded?
So what you can do, if you can make a motion to rescind, she could make her motion to rescind, which could be seconded, then by majority vote, that rescinds it and you start from scratch.
Okay, do we have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, it's rescinded, we're right back to zero. So I think what we're talking about right now is making a motion that initiates sending the application to the state for the Florida Forever program. And attached to the application is the document that I just read right here. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Discussion.
I'd like those changes.
Want to make any comments?
The only comments I would make is the details will, will come much, much further along. We are just opening the process.
Any further discussion?
I've already gave my opinion on that.
Okay. We'll bring it to a vote. Andrew, would you repeat what we're doing here so everybody clearly knows what this motion is?
As I understand it, the motion is essentially to support the application regarding the designation as well as a vote to essentially approve that draft prospectus as amended, making it the ultimate final prospectus, at least at this point in time. That's my understanding of the motion, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 3-2.
Thank you. Means we got to get to work.
Thank you, Mr. Eno, and everybody else who's been involved in this process.
And, and I do, in the spirit of governance, I do appreciate really thoroughly going through these things and vetting them out and talking about it. It is, it beats you up and it tires you down, but that is the way, you just have to do business. Okay, we're on number 11. Council liaison reports and any comments from any council members. Ms. Covich, you want to start us off with that?
Actually, Monday evening is tomorrow night, so I'm thinking further through reports and the workshop.
Okay.
That's with the historic preservation.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Nothing?
Oh, nothing.
Ms. Kenny?
Nothing.
Okay.
To report.
Let me see if I have anything.
Oh.
Do you have something?
I just want to let everybody know that the Dunellen FFA swine show, we should be tickled pink, ha, 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 are, are young people from Dunellen. They really produce a lot. They had grand champion for the swine from a, from a young man whose family's been in Dunellen for years. My mom went to high school with his grandfather and such and so forth. A lot of our kids with the cows, and I'm not using the steers, they did champions at Dunellen represented very, very well our youth who we need to, you know, continue to support. The Dunellen Little League, of course, is up and going, of course, you know, they're, that's one thing that we will need to work on. And I will, I just wanted to say one thing because a resident didn't bring it up the other day about why didn't I, one person, work on our little league fields all these years? And I thought about it and, and yeah, it's true. Why hasn't it been brought up? Why haven't all the parks been brought up by the 1,800 people that live in the city limits of Dunellen? There were some past decisions, and I always hate when you point fingers at people. And it put the city into a spiraling effect where we just about were on the brink of bankruptcy. And although we would have loved to have put our funds in other places, we weren't giving people races, we weren't, um, doing projects that we desperately needed to do, including our parks, because of the financial burden that we were in. And the councils that I was privileged enough to also sit on got us out of those just to this time now. So we are just now starting to get our head above water. And now I wish we would do the funding this coming year for the Little League parks and the Ernie Mills parks and the parks that we have, even if all they have is a bench or two. So I just wanted to acknowledge that I did hear that comment, I thought about it and, but that is the reasoning sadly, is that there was just no funds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me speak.
You're welcome. And like I, I didn't give instructions today, but I will be very aware and I will be very observant to any council person being singled out, being asked questions.
And it does happen to me quite so often.
And I, and that is on me-
I know.
-to take care of that.
(laughing).
Okay. Believe me, I've been on, on the, you know, I've been on that end of it pretty good. If anybody knows what it feels like, I do. Okay, I just want to say a couple of things. Just, just a reminder to, to the council that we are a council, we are a body that works together. Sometimes we get our way and sometimes we don't. But the bottom line is, once the council has fairly discussed things and we've come to a decision, we have made that decision together. So you have to appreciate the fact that being a council person, anything you say is newsworthy. It's much different than when you're a resident, when you give opinions or whatever, you are a council person and what you say does count in what you say to one person. You can count on that person saying it to another person and it winds up, you know, the internet. So what I'm basically saying is when we hash it out and we make our decision, we're all in it together, we support us and we take it from there. The only other counts, only other comment I have is, and I'm not bringing this up for a discussion, I really thought we had hit it right on the head the other night on the expansion of the five-minute rule. I thought through discussion, and we spent a lot of time on that, I really liked the idea that we were basically mimicking what the county did, that the only way you got past three minutes is the day before or a couple of days before, you had to call the office and request that. I thought you did a fine job, Vice Mayor, of looking at all the different ways the various cities and the counties do that. I really thought that was spot on where unless you get ahold of us a day or two before, whatever we decide to do, everybody's happy three minutes. So that might be something down the line, council might want to reconsider because I, after talking about it, I thought we had it, just hmm, thought it was right on the money. So with that said, if no one else has any more comments, we will now go to department reports. Troy, you always say that it gets late by the time you speak, so we're going to let you speak first.
I'm not going to argue for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to make sure I was used as an example several times tonight. You're not looking to fire me, are you?
No, I like making your life miserable.
Anyhow, real short and sweet, council, ladies and gentlemen, we're in the middle of approximately 20 projects, so I'm going to make this real quick. I'll give you an update on our parking lot projects right now. We're looking at approximately 10 to 15% completion. They'll start putting asphalt down on the small parking lot, the backside of Ernie Mills, probably by the end of the week. Everything else is going pretty smooth on there. We did fall into a couple of challenges. We found some storm drains that were homemade. It's going to cost us a little bit to put DOT required storm drains in, but nothing major at this point. So I will be attending the historic board meeting tomorrow evening. We have discovered an opportunity and materials to change out lighting with solar-powered LED decorative streetlights. So I'll be working on presentation at the historic board meeting tomorrow night. I have the gentleman's name in my head, he's the, one of the historians that works at Train Depot. He's also been researching the solar light package, so rather than, say it again?
John Starkey.
No, I'll think of it here just about the time I'm done talking. Our city beach, we do have in the budget to start putting out shade shelters and a portable office or a small office building. We have received quotes on the office buildings. We're going to obtain a couple of different concepts on that. And the shade shelters, we finally found a contractor that is willing to look at the project. It's been a long time coming. This particular contractor will do the engineering, the architect, and the construction, all as one complete package. So I'll be meeting with him this week and it looks like we may have identified a second contractor now that he knows someone else is interested. So we may get a better price that way. We have our storm water management project that we are working on with SWF MUD and DEP with Kimberley Horn. Tomorrow, we have an update or a status meeting. Today, I received a notice that this project may be delayed after tomorrow for several months as a result of the state trying to compile their flood, flood data and updating all their information. So we may not be as far along at the end of the year as we want to be on that.
What project was that?
This is the storm water asset identification and mapping project-
Okay, I got it.
...that we're working on through Grant with SWF MUD and DEP and Kimberley Horn.
Okay.
Okay? This is one of the projects that I tell you when we go to look to paving roads, we're taking into consideration the impact it may have as a result of storm water requirements. All right? And the last but not least, FGUA's requirement for the backflow or cross-connection devices, we may have come up with a plan to reducing the number of city-owned water meters by tentatively reducing some of the irrigation on our more hardy areas that do not require annual irrigation, therefore reducing the cost annually and reducing our costs to come in compliance with the backflow prevention devices. I just did a brief research, we spent $16,000 and change on water bills last year. I hope to cut that nearly in half after we finish vetting the options. So I'll keep council informed that maybe in April, we'll have a solution that everybody can agree on and save money and redirect it where it needs to be. Other than that, that's it for now, unless council has anything for me.
Any questions?
We're still doing on the 20th, the extra meeting on the 22nd?
Yes, we, don't forget, we are doing our master road plan presentation on the 22nd, the special workshop.
Special workshop.
Absolutely. And I am meeting with the engineers in the field tomorrow for a road paving coming up, which will also tie into that program.
That, that's a real good date for everybody to remember. We're really going to take a hard look at the condition of the roads.
We're going to hit the road running?
Yeah. So it would be a real good meeting to come to find out what we're trying to do with the amount of money we have. It was something that has been talked about for a long time and we're prepared to do as much as we can with the money we have.
Are we meeting at 5:30 or did we make that one earlier?
It's tied in together with the, there's one item on the agenda before-
Why'd we decide?
It's at the final workshop.
Is it on the 22nd?
And the public hearing on the ordinance.
Yes.
That's right. And so we, I think we talked about, instead of scheduling two separate meetings-
Yeah, I just didn't know if we could-
-having jump actioners, publish two agendas, we would just put Troy's presentation on the regular meeting agenda that we're having.
I just didn't know if we could do it earlier in the day so that we didn't have to have y'all staying extra on a night that's not normal. That's it?
I'm good at any time that's convenient for the council.
So it is scheduled at 5, right? 5 o'clock?
Well, we haven't published an agenda yet, so, but previous discussions, we didn't-
This is a special meeting, so I think it's okay to have a different time.
Okay.
So whatever time works for everybody.
I was just trying to put it on my calendar.
I was just thinking if we could do it at 4, but Andrew, can you do that? Because aren't you having to be here for it?
I could, I discussed this with Mandy and I was planning and attending by phone, but if you'd prefer to have me in person, I could be, but I can, anytime by phone, of course.
I mean, if we did it at 4, that way, I'm just thinking we're not doing overtime hours for staff. I'm sure they love seeing our lovely faces. But if we did it at 4, we'd probably be out of here by 6:30 the very latest. I mean, that's just, that's just me.
I don't have a problem.
I mean, I'm working, but I'll, I'll make a recommend, you know.
Absolutely.
On the 22nd, 4 or 5?
Mandy was saying-
Do we actually have to take a vote on this to make it at 4? Mandy, just take it, put it at 4.
I got it.
4 o'clock, 22nd.
I'm afraid-
Is that better for y'all staff?
Yes.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid if we have a motion in a second, it might encourage a 30-minute discussion.
Oh, Lord.
I want it 4 or 5.
All right, so we're, we're done with that. Okay.
4 o'clock.
Thank you, Troy. Chief, you usually have a bunch on your plate to report.
Yes, we've got some good things. Today was the period of time that they did the shops out at the-
Pull your, pull your mic a little closer to you. There you go, that's perfect.
The, at Horstman's Park, we did carry three elderly citizens out there today.
Oh, thank you.
So that was, and they was very appreciative of being able to have a ride to the Horstman's Park to get their shop.
Oh, thank you, that was sweet. I was worried about that.
That's number one. Number two is the building department has processed five new single-family residents since February the 3rd, so that makes approximately 14 homes. That is in various stages of construction and certificate of occupancy should be issued to five of those in the next coming week.
Wow.
So that is good stuff. Audi's picked up their permits and so they are starting their construction and the buildings owning department has issued 135 permits are in the plane, are in planned review process. And I'm just going over some of those right quickly. Since January the 4th, Dan Adams has closed 19 code, city code cases. 13 cases were from 2020, six cases were from 2021. We currently have seven active open cases pending before the code enforcement. And, that's all I have.
Okay, there you go.
Chief, I got my second shot last minute.
Anybody have any additional questions for Chief?
Sorry, it's happened.
Okay, very good. Jan Smith, you have, you have anything? Please, don't go through the budget from top to bottom.
I, I don't intend to do that.
Don't do that.
I've only been back a couple weeks. I just have a few things. The downtown project, as y'all know, is complete. I've submitted the last request for reimbursement for the CDBG grant and Fred Fox and Associates will be sending the closing documents for the CDBG grant in for the mayor's signature and that project will be another one for the record books. The total cost of that project was $1,154,941.94.
Wow.
Troy and I will be submitting a grant application to USDA for some public works vehicles. The grants do require 25% match and we will bring that before council prior to submitting the applications and we will identify a funding source for that 25% that the city would be responsible for. And finally, the city's auditors will be here the end of March, beginning of April to perform the annual audit for fiscal year 1920. And they'll be here a couple of weeks with audit delivery sometime in May. And that's all I have.
How you feeling?
I'm hanging in there.
Yeah?
Glad to be back. Glad to be amongst people.
We're glad to have you back. Mandy, do you, do you have anything to report? I know we have to, we'd like to introduce our new one.
Yes, we have filled the position of records clerk with Ms. Julie Danowski. Some of you may not know, or you may know, that Lynn is going to semi-retire and head south. And we hate to see her go, but she's, she's busted her tail around here and done such a good job and she's doing such a good job training Julie and we just all want to wish Lynn the best.
Absolutely, yeah.
And Julie's doing very well, so please welcome her if you see her. Introduce yourself. The RFQ for the architectural services has been, the ads have been sent out to the newspapers and we will have that published on the website tomorrow. Had to clean that up a little bit. Chief and I had to go over, set some dates and whatnot, so I'll have that ready out on the website tomorrow. Don't forget, next Wednesday, the 17th, we have the joint workshop at 3 o'clock with the planning commission and the historic board. As we just discussed, I don't think we have anything on the 3/22 agenda except for the ordinance and the roads presentation, correct? Anything else that needs to be on that agenda? Nobody?
Counsel, this is, if we want something on that second meeting in March, this is the time to, if someone thinks of something after this meeting, can they still get it on the agenda?
We will publish the agenda. And this is a special council meeting, so it's kind of outside of our, probably our resolution, which defines the deadlines for submission, but we have to publish the agenda no later than the 15th. So I would say if, if someone wanted something, if they made a request by Thursday, the 11th, end of this week, we could manage to get it on the 15th.
Okay, fair enough.
And we'll publish it.
So it's good that everybody, you know, knows, knows that. So if you think of something you would like to put on that agenda by Thursday, the 11th, you need to contact me. Everyone in the audience, just a little tip for you is, once an agenda is published, whether it be a workshop or a meeting, then it closes out what can be added to it. So it's very important that if any residents want anything on an agenda to be discussed, you can always contact one of your council persons and ask them to put something on the agenda if they feel it's warranted. But once those agendas are published, you know, it can't, can't be put on unless it's something, I guess, of a real emergency or something real-
And there's a resolution that exists that governs the timing of when a person can make a request to be placed on a workshop agenda or a council meeting agenda. And, and I believe right off the top of my head, it is for a workshop agenda, I believe it's the Wednesday before.
Mm-hmm.
The workshop and for a council meeting, or no, for a council meeting, it was a Wednesday before. I had Lynn look into this for me the other day. It was Resolution 201314, I remember that. But if anybody, you know, wants a copy of that or wants to see that, I can certainly get it to them, but it, it creates the, the deadlines for which someone can request to be placed on-
Right, it should, it should be on our website where it's easy to find too, or easier.
Probably not. Because it probably came down with all the other ADA inaccessible documents.
It would probably be a good thing to have somewhere, wouldn't you agree? Just to have the statement of-
But it's not, it's not ADA.
But no, we can, we can make a statement on the website.
Oh, oh, statement.
But the resolution, you'll find out there.
Just, just to clarify.
Oh, I think that's the resolution, sorry.
So I received the resignation from Matt, I still can't pronounce his last name, Lobfried. Lobfried. He is no longer with us. He won't be working out the 90 days as planned, so we're back at square one. Lobfried. He is no longer with us. He won't be working out the 90 days as planned, so we're back at square one. And I have to report, unfortunately, that I have not received any viable applications for the job either today.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Ms. Roberts? Is there any other department head? Chief, did you have something else to add?
I talked to the people at the bridge today. They will finish up Friday moving the water pipe, so because spring is coming in, they will not be able to use that water pipe to jump off the bridge. They said they'll be done hopefully by Friday.
All right, very good. Let me ask you something, Chief, on that. Which went up first, the fence or the water pipe? Because what I'm saying is, if they put the water pipe up after the fence was put up, they in essence gave people a way to get around the fence, right?
That was there.
But they're moving it. It's the chicken or the egg.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But they were a very good crew, very, and I also received a phone call from the engineer who says, we worked very well, Troy worked with them, and we've allowed them to park the vehicles over San Jose, so they should finish up this Friday.
Okay, and the state's doing that, correct? Is that the state or county?
County.
County?
Yes.
And that was, we kind of put the bug in their ear that we needed them to come out there and do that.
Yes.
And that was.
It's been an effort of the council and all the staff.
Yeah, you were getting a call, you were getting, during the summer, you're getting a call every other day about kids jumping off the bridge, right?
And it's the parents who's watching the kids jumping, telling them when they can jump.
See, there's another example of the city doing things that you would never, you would never see, you know, taking care of something like that. It's not anything, it's publicized or anything, but it's the city at work doing things behind the scenes. All right. Any other department reports that I've skipped? City attorney's report, Andrew.
Yes, sir, only one thing. At the last council, at the council workshop, I gave a report on the latest with governors' executive orders and so forth, and there was a question regarding the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines. So immediately, well, the next day, following the workshop on Thursday, the state received its first allocation, or the first portion of what would be the first distribution of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines, the state received 60,000 doses of 175 that are slated for the first round of distribution. So the 60,000 are already here in the state and began being administered, I believe, either Thursday evening or on Friday, but I know that certainly they were distributed over the weekend. And the other vaccines to account for that, 175,000 be forthcoming, the additional 100 and 8,000.
Okay, very good. All right, anything else anybody would like to say before we adjourn? If not, how about a motion and a second?
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor, second?
Second.
Ms. Kenny, all in favor, yes?
See y'all.
Thank you, we'll see you on the 17th.